Hey. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the September 9, 2024 workshop for the Greenville City Council. I'm Mayor PJ Conley. I'll be presiding over today's workshop. First, I'll call Honor City Clerk for the roll call.
Yes, sir. Mayor PJ Conley.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Daniels.
Present.
Councilmember Foreman.
Here.
Councilmember Blackburn.
Present.
Councilmember Scully.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson will be joining us. Councilmember Willis.
Here.
All right. We're Conley and Foreman.
Thank you very much. Will now move on to the approval of the agenda. Mr. Mayor.
No change.
Second.
Most have been made by Mayor Pro Tem Daniels, same by Councilmember Blackburn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Most passes by zero.
All right. We'll move on to new business. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. The first item on the agenda today is an update on outstanding NC DOT projects by staff of NC DOT. We are fortunate to have with us Mayor Joe Alco, with our representative, District 2 representative on the board. It's here, also with Jeremy Stroud from NC DOT and staff. And we had the pleasure of taking the staff around and Ms. Alco to do some tours of a couple of our very major thoroughfares with concerns to vehicle and pedestrian activity. And what we thought is what we would do is, while they were here, is just take an opportunity to review some of the very major NC DOT projects that we have outstanding that will be moving forward over the next several years. Several hundred million worth of projects. Take a look at the funding status of a majority of those and then talk about what some of the major priorities that currently stand unfunded are in the future that will impact our ability to keep on expanding our community. I will first turn it over to our Director of Engineering, Lisa Kirby, to introduce our.
Good afternoon, everybody. As Michael told you, we did have a, we had a two-hour tour today of the city of Greenville and some of our troubled corridors. Very appreciative of the time that Division 2 and NC DOT, as well as some representatives, took on our behalf today. I'll introduce Jeremy Stroud. He's been with NC DOT since 2006, if I remember that correctly, and was recently promoted to Division Engineer in January of this year. So we're happy to have him here. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. Again, Jeremy Stroud with NC DOT. Thank you for having me tonight and share a little bit of information about some projects and good things we've got going on in the Greenville area. First thing I'd like to share with you is we have a statewide transportation improvement plan. So this is a 10-year plan that captures all projects, highway capital projects throughout the state. So in the Greenville urban area NPO, there are 13 highway projects in the STIP from this area. Those 13 projects represent almost $570 million worth of improvements. I'll put that in perspective in a little bit later on with what that looks like, the total that we have here in Division 2. So anyway, just keep that in mind, 570-some million dollars. The first two projects are currently underway. The first one's Dickinson Avenue. The project was lit in March of 2022 and began in June of 2022. I think everybody's aware of the struggles we had with the contract on that project, the original one, J. Smith Civil. They defaulted. And recently, the project was awarded to Fred Smith Company to finish that project out. And they're currently underway, making great progress. Currently, the project's 38% complete with anticipated completion date of the summer of 2027. I'm going to roll through these 13 projects. So if anybody has any questions about any one specifically, please feel free to ask me. The next current project that we have going on that's underway is the replacement of the bridge number 38 over the Tar River. This is the northbound bridge on NC 11. It was awarded to WC English Incorporated in August of 2022. Currently, that project's about 30% complete with anticipated completion date of the spring of 2026. All right. Our next two projects are actually projects on city of Greenville assets. The DOT is doing all the design work and we will be implementing the project with our contractors and our inspection staff. The first one is on Oxford Road over Meeting House Branch. That project will actually, it's right now, it's under a one-lane road condition. So the project will be lit in September 2024. The contractor will begin work in November 2024 and they'll have 120 days to complete that work. So looking sometime in the spring of 2024 to have it completed. The next project, again, it's a city of Greenville asset, is a culvert replacement on Rock Spring Road. Looking at that project going under construction in 2029. As we move through this presentation, just know that some of these dates, as they go farther, farther out, are soft dates. So that's what we're shooting for right now, but things change with funding, with increases in funding and decreases in funding. And I'll get to that again here in a minute. All right. So the next round of projects are projects that we're currently actively working on in some way, shape, or form, either going through design, right-of-way utility work. They're in the plan, but again, they are a little farther out than the ones I just mentioned. The first one being Allen Road. We currently have almost all the right-of-way acquired on that project. We're currently working with the Greenville Utilities Commission to relocate their power facilities. And we anticipate letting this contract to a contractor in October of 2025. The next one on our list here is the Evans Street widening project. Right now, again, we're working on right-of-way and hopes that once we have right-of-way parcels acquired, we can start relocating utilities on those parcels. Currently, that project's lit to be, or anticipated to be lit in April of 2026 with an estimated contract amount at this time of almost $167 million. Next contract, 14th Street widening. Again, we're working on the right-of-way plans at this time. Almost a $30 million project, anticipating construction September 2026. Kind of in that same area, the Greenville and Winneville boundary, the Fire Tower Road widening project from Charles to 10th Street. This project, we're again working on right-of-way. We just received approval to work on the end east of 14th Street. Looking at beginning, or letting that contract July 2029. Again, almost another $167 million project. The next project here is NC 43 widening. So this takes off at Signature Drive and goes to Mills Road. Project, again, we just received approval to begin some design work on the project. Almost a $92 million project and again, looking at beginning sometime June 2029. Worthington Road, we're installing a roundabout at Country Home Road and Worthington Road. We really haven't done any preliminary work on this project yet. It's anticipated to be lit in June 2029. So as we get closer to that timeframe, we'll begin opening up design work right away and then utility work. All right. My next two projects, I've got a bullet at the bottom. This is a regional funding project that'll make more sense to everybody in a minute. But this is the Greenville Signal System Upgrade Project. Again, we really haven't done a lot of work on this project yet because with these signal upgrades, we really do do a lot of design work about a year in advance of letting the contract because utilities are changing all the time with different aerial service providers trying to come to the area. So we don't do a lot of work ahead of the let dates to prevent rework. But again, we're looking at letting that project November 2027 and almost a $14 million project. All right. And I believe the last project here out of the 13, this is a project on, it's really West Fifth Street. You're adding two dual-left turn lanes to turn left so you can take Memorial North, which would lead right into the bridge replacement project that's going on right now. Again, this is a regional funded project, anticipated to be lit in October 2025. Right-of-way is completed on the project and almost $1.4 million estimated in construction cost. So before I move on, are there any questions about the 13 projects?
Yes. Are those left turn lanes or right turn lanes?
Those are left turn lanes from Fifth Street going north onto Memorial.
Okay. So I'm thinking left takes you over towards Stansburg.
So this will be, like I said, at West Fifth, West Fifth Street. Yep. Like you're coming from Big's Barbecue and you want to turn left on, yep, to go head north on Memorial. Yes.
Thank you.
All right. So I gave a caveat a while ago, those dates, especially further in the future, are, they're soft dates. Every two years, DOT goes through what they call a prioritization process. So your metropolitan planning organizations, your rural planning organizations, and the divisions themselves, we solicit projects to be scored through the prioritization process. And through that scoring, really determines what new projects are available in that round. So some of the issues that DOT and everywhere across the state have realized over the last couple of years, especially since COVID, is increase in construction cost. So this is a 10-year plan. We've been working on some of these projects since 2017, 2018. And we have realized some of those have almost doubled in price a lot of times. And so what that does to prioritization and bringing new projects on, it really limits what you can do. So with the state and our prioritization process, there's 22 buckets that projects can be funded by. The projects that Division 2 projects can be funded on are the statewide level, a regional level, which we compete with the Wilmington area, and then Division 2, those projects compete within the eight counties within the division. This is what our STIP unit sent our divisions and our NPOs in May of this year. So what this is telling you is that the statewide level, which receives 40% of all the funds, there's a capacity to add $1 billion with the projects. At that tier, all the projects that are accepted onto the system, they're all, it's all data-driven. So if you, if your project receives a high data score, it can, it can be funded. If not, there's, there's no other way around it. As you move down in tiers, the regional scores, 70% of the score is data-driven. The other 30% is through your NPO in your division. When you go down to the divisional level, 50% of the score is data-driven. The other 25 is from your NPO and the other 25 are from the division. So there's some flexibility as you move down in tier to move away from just data-driven projects and things that score high from a metric level to more of what the locals need and desire for their transportation needs. So I mentioned again, statewide mobility is approximately $1 billion of funding available. There was only one project east of 95 that was selected as a statewide project, and that was the Cape Fear Memorial Bridge in Wilmington. And that was selected because I think it had some tolling funds with the project. So nothing else east of 95 in the statewide mobility category. At the regional level, you see the negative number there. So what the negative number is telling you in this round of spot is we have too many projects in the hopper already. And so our STIP has to be fiscally constrained and therefore, there are some decisions to be made in the future. And some of those have already been made with the NPOs, RPOs, and the division to prioritize the needs for that area. And we've done that. As you move down to Division 2, you can also see again, a negative balance. That just shows again, we've got more projects than we have funding this time. I showed this slide here to show you if we didn't have a problem with being overcommitted in projects, how much additional capacity could we add in each one of the tiers each cycle? So on the statewide level, again, if everything was true to, we didn't have any negative balances. To the statewide category, you're looking at, on average, adding $2.6 billion in capacity. In the region, almost $230 million in capacity. In the divisional level, $140 million in capacity every two years. So this will be important in a minute when I show you how our top 10 projects scored in the region and divisional levels. Again, I kind of alluded to this, going back to the previous, the previous slide with the negative balances. We have to make our STIP fiscally constrained, which means some projects may have to be delayed. Some projects may be decommitted, which means they may go out of the two years. And then they would have to be reprioritized in subsequent rounds of prioritization. I don't have a feel for that right now. Again, our STIP unit in Raleigh, they have taken all the information that the divisions and the NPOs have provided them with their priorities for the currently committed projects. And they're going to use that information and try to develop a plan that works best for all with the money's available. All right. So next, I'd like to show you if we, if we did have a prioritization round this time where we were going to add new projects to the system, what would that look like for the Greenville urban area NPO? And so these are the top 10 projects, the ones with the stars on them are in the Greenville urban area. This number down here at the bottom, 230 million, is from a previous slide showing the additional capacity that's added each round through prioritization. So if you look at the top project that scored the best through the region, so again, the region we're competing with the Wilmington area, Greenville had one of the top projects. It's a 200, almost a $216 million project. And it's an access management project on Greenville Boulevard from 10th Street and the Tar River Bridges to Dickinson Avenue. So again, that, that project scored really well in the division. If we had capacity to add projects this round, that would be one of the ones that I think the division and the NPO would support and that would potentially get funded. So if we were going through the process and we were doing this, so we take, that project's 216 million. You take it off of the 230, that doesn't give you a lot left. And when you go down this list, you're probably not even picking up any of the other projects for prioritization. So that's one of the struggles that we have with trying to bring these large projects onto the system. Again, a project like that can eat up most of the funding in the region for that round of prioritization. As we move on to the division round, so again, these projects, they go back through prioritization again and they're, they're rerank with different criteria for, for the division level. So at the divisional level, I think the city of Greenville, the Greenville urban area NPO, they have seven out of the 10 projects. There's a lot of traffic needs in this area and that's what the data tells you on the front end. Now again, with this tier, there's some flexibility between what the NPO supports and what the division supports, whether you would prioritize things in this, this manner. But if you were going strictly off the data, the data, this is how it would look. Again, that 264 alternate project scores high at the division. Hopefully, this project would be picked up in the region and you could take that amount off of the division and then go further down the list of projects here. Because again, you have about $140 million with the capacity to add each round of prioritization. So that's kind of how our process works. Again, our STIP unit, once they get local input, local input and they have the data, they go through and prioritize projects based on capacity and, and the needs of the locals and that kind of thing. Any questions on current projects, our prioritization project, process? Yes, sir.
I came late, so you may have already answered this question.
Yes, sir.
How do we rank in this, against district in terms of deficit and funding to the rest of the state?
So.
What I'm really kind of getting down to is it, our state section of the state's not getting funded and others are? Or how do we relate to other sections in the state? That's what I'd like to know.
So I think this is the easiest way to break down your question.
Okay.
Okay. So at the statewide level, 40% of the funds out of our capital, our capital improvement program, our Highway Trust Fund, go to the statewide tier at the top. All of that's data-driven. It's really based on congestion and the kind of traffic you have. And again, out of this round of prioritization, there was only one project east of 95 that scored at that level and was funded. Everything else is really in your Charlotte, your Raleigh areas, the urbanized areas. You're addressing your congestion needs.
That kind of answered my question.
Okay. Now, when you go down to the regionals, the region tiers, they also get 40% of that, that amount, that statewide amount. But each region is distributed funds based on the population in that region. So Greenville's area and Wilmington's area, their population is kind of scored against the Charlottes, the Rollies, the other urbanized areas.
Big cities get big money by money.
Well, they have big needs too. That would be the argument of transportation. So that, that's really, the statewide and the region are really where you're addressing those big capital projects. Your interstate expansions, your, like I said, if we can ever get the Kinston bypass funded in Lenore County, that would, that would most likely be a statewide mobility project. The problem, my division in that project specifically, there's not a lot of traffic there in today to justify and bring that data score up. Whereas you have congestion in Raleigh, Charlotte, and the other urbanized areas every day that's driving their projects.
Just like we have congestion out there.
We do, yes, sir. We do. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'm not trying to beat up the messenger. Please.
Oh, no. Please, I'm here to answer any question and be as helpful as I can.
In those areas where we're overcommitted, which is the regional and the division level, you mentioned that some projects might have to be decommitted. Does that mean?
Pushed out of the 10 years and have to be submitted again as a project to be scored again in subsequent rounds of prioritization.
So not only do we not get any new projects, but some of them are going to get bumped to the back of the line again?
Yes, ma'am.
So what does that mean? Now, I do not mean to put you on the spot. Thank you all so much for all the time that everybody's taking today, looking at our traffic issues. What does that mean for emergent traffic problems, emergent needs such as those we saw today that haven't even been into the process yet?
Right. The way our STIP and our program is, is, the way it's data-driven, there's some component of like economic incentives and that kind of thing, but really, a lot of the metrics used are again, those, those traffic volumes, the volume and capacity ratios of a road. So if a road can hold 40,000 cars and you've got 20,000 on it today, it's not going to score well. Whereas if you've got some of the urbanized areas that have 50,000 and 60,000 on that same 40,000 vehicle per day road, they're going to have a higher capacity or volume capacity ratio. There's going to score better. The way the metrics are set up, it shows that they have more need than what, what a lower volume road would have.
And that makes good sense. And my last follow-up question, I know you all are the Department of Transportation. You primarily deal with motorized transportation, but where does pedestrian need fit into these kinds of scores?
So pedestrian projects are also submitted and they have to be scored along with the highway projects. So your pedestrian projects are competing. I think out of the total funding, I think 6% is set aside for pedestrian projects at this time.
That changed in receiving your visit. They used to have their own.
Well, it used to be 4%, I think, or five, and they've increased it to six.
Oh, that's good news.
Yes.
Not a lot, but thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am. And when we, when we do a capital project like Evans Fire Tower, pedestrian improvements are being included in the scope of work at those projects too. So you do have some benefit to pedestrians and bicyclists with those projects. I will mention two in that regard. When we scope a project and we do an estimate for sidewalks and bike lanes and the roadway and we go through prioritization, everything, and if a project's $100 million and we get a request to change those to maybe multi-use path and you're using up additional right-of-way, you're having to move utilities additional, that $100 million project may be a $125 million project when it's all said and done. So just realize some of the decisions that the NPOs make with scoping these projects affect the cost and what other projects can be brought on down the road as well.
I think the idea of rolling pedestrian improvements into the road improvements is such a great way forward and glad to hear that that's happening as much as possible.
Jeremy, for council's sake, can you kind of talk about what you're seeing as far, because a lot of this is formula-driven and it's all based off of taxes, say through the gasoline tax. And you know, we've seen the increase in the cost of construction. That's what's driving a lot of these overages. All those red numbers you see right there are all, for the most part, based off of the costs of, you're seeing from contractors to materials.
Right.
Have you seen, is NC DOT seeing the dollars, those, those costs coming back down in line? Or is it pretty much stabilized at a much higher level than what the funding formulas are allowing for? Can you speak of, is there any way?
I can answer that question by saying we are, we are seeing those costs and we're anticipating them better in our estimates. And we're doing a better job at estimating the cost of projects. I don't know that they plateaued. I don't, I'm not able to answer that question. I just don't have that information about what the trends are with construction cost and things.
Because I think, because council has seen this from even the city's perspective. The cost of capital projects that we've even engineered have come in almost double what, what the anticipated annual cost was. And lots of a lot of what you're seeing here is there's just not enough funding to go around and meet the capacity of the needs based off of the current costs.
Right.
That's to fund the current projects that are, which are over the next 10 years, much less the projects that are not funded with the ones you have the stars beside. That might be in the next round, which may even further in the next decade.
Oh, yeah. Absolutely.
I mean, that's, that's what he's really saying is that there's not even enough money to fund the projects that are supposed to be funded, much less the larger projects that we know based off of the size of our community are, have been identified in the next round. We don't even know if the funding will be there to fund those, which might be more than a decade out. Man, just put it in.
Yeah, absolutely.
So just to kind of put a holistic point of view on it, things continue and it's nobody's fault that construction costs have gone up and that funding has remained a little bit stagnant.
Yeah. I don't know about that.
Somebody's fault. When projects that should be funded currently are pushed back 10 years, then some of the projects, for instance, that we saw today that aren't even in the system yet, what I'm, what I'm trying to get at is how do we, how do we kind of get at projects that are emergent and that really need attention sooner than, than getting them kind of bumped to the back of the line? Is there a process for that?
I would, I would say it's, I mean, the money that we have in the pot is the money we have in the pot. If the NPO wants to prioritize, like we looked at today, a 10th Street project over like a Greenville Boulevard or a Fire Tower Road, like that might be some conversations to be had. But outside of like creating new revenues or something like that, which we as DOT as a whole, we're, we're soliciting input from the public right now, the governance offices on, you know, what does the public's feel for additional revenue sources for DOT? Is it vehicle miles traveled? Is it additional registration cost? You know, what would be acceptable to the public? We're soliciting input for that, that right now. And that, if you could increase revenues for the department, you can increase more projects you bring online. But within the scope of what we have now, really, you're the, I said, you're, you're, the NPO needs to make a decision once they're prioritized.
Thank you.
Yep. And also, you know, I'll go on to kind of my, my next topic, or some projects that do not go through prioritization, some smaller-scale projects. Some of the things we looked at today, although they're not the ideal fix for the corridor, like installing the two-billow markers to prevent left turns, to provide pedestrian access in certain locations. Again, even though it doesn't address the whole corridor, it may address the issue or mitigate some concerns at isolated issues. And those are things that we can do outside of this program that again, are not the long-term solution, but as a temporary solution, it may be more beneficial than what you have now. And so a couple of those, and again, we looked at, I think, almost all of these in our, on our bus ride today. The Hawk at 10th and Anderson. This project is again, aims to alleviate the vehicular congestion due to the student congestion all at the same time with the current system that's in place. So what a Hawk signal will do is it'll be coordinated with the addition, or the adjacent, adjacent traffic signals and it will allow students to congregate and instead of having free access to go across when they push the button, it'll be timed. So they'll act, it'll act like an intersection, just like the road acts, like an intersection. And like I said, what that should help with would be with the vehicular mobility as well as still keeping the pedestrians safe. And this is actually a picture I took in Kansas last summer. And this is a Hawk system. They had three or four in their municipality in Lawrence, Kansas. So again, these are common in other places and this, the one in Greenville at 10th and Anderson, we're looking at installing August of next year. And again, a lot of that's due to some issues we've got with utilities conflicts and the design that's underway right now, as well as acquiring the steel poles for, for that, that device. The next one here is actually a short-term solution that, you know, I think we received word while we were out today that we've got approval for our change in scope from an original project that this was a part of. But this is doing an access management project from Stansburg Road to Fifth Street. Basically, what we're doing is we're putting a median in that center turn lane to force traffic up to Fifth Street to make a, make a U-turn or to turn left to access Sixth Street and some of the businesses on the other side. That location's a highway safety improvement project. There was 103 crashes there in five years and 52 or three of them, I can't remember, but 50-something were right there at Sixth Street. So that should help mitigate some of those crashes at that location. The next one that's kind of been ongoing here in Greenville is signal installation at Evans and Howe. We have got the signal design back for that project and we're in the process of ordering the steel poles, which normally takes six to nine months to get. So again, this is another one that we hope to have installed in August of next year. And then the final one here is some improvements at the NC. And then the final one here is some improvements at the NC 43 and US 264 ramps. I believe y'all will see that later on tonight, but what we're looking at doing is putting some roundabouts at the top of those ramps. This project came to DOT on the eastbound ramp at 43, there was a fatality there a couple of years ago. And also Greenville Utilities just relocated out there, and they approached DOT about some concerns with the westbound traffic ramp, especially in the morning time, vehicles were actually turning right to go out of town to then do a U-turn in their driveway, which is not designed for a U-turn, to go back into town to avoid the queue for the left turn traffic. So hopefully, roundabouts there would help mitigate the mobility and the safety concerns at that, that intersection and interchange. That's all I've got. Any questions?
I mean, I've got one, I've got a few comments. You know, one of the things I think that is the most frustrating for me is I feel like sometimes there's some like low-hanging fruit things that can be done. One of the ones that I brought up at our NPO meetings is the signalization for our city. When I first got elected in 15, I think it was in 16, what was my buddy's name that worked for the NC DOT, the former Navy SEAL? What was that guy's name?
Bill.
Bill Cannon. Bill Cannon, I love, I love Bill Cannon, that guy was awesome. But I mean, I think he was one of the guy that came and gave the presentation, and I think at that time, the plan was to replace or do the signalization program within a year or two years of that. And I think the total cost was, was $9 million. I think the city's allocation was 10% of that, which was $900,000. And we had set that money aside, and then like you look at it today, and here we are, we're looking at 2027, that's over a decade. You know, to me, like, that's a low-hanging fruit thing that, it's not the fix-all, right? It's not going to fix everything in Greenville, but if there's a way to be able to help move that traffic and help some of the congestion problems that we're having while we're trying to figure out where the additional revenue sources can come from, to me, that's something simple, right? That's not a 150, 200 million dollar project, but that's a, what was the cost estimate? 13.9 million or something like that? You know, that's something that could make a big difference in our city, that could potentially move traffic throughout our city while we're trying to figure out where that, that stream of incomes coming from to be able to pay for those projects. You know, and I think sometimes the most frustrating thing for me as, as an elected official at the local level is, I think you're, the DOT gets a lot of bad publicity and blame for things, you know, but it's pretty much out of your control when, when you don't have the funding, right? And I think that, to me, I think the biggest disappointment that I have is I feel like it's, it's the perfect example of government failing, right? There's been a problem, and I've been elected now, this will be my ninth year being elected, none of those projects have been done. So, you know, Michael was just talking about decades. I mean, it's been a decade since we started talking about, almost a decade since we started talking about the Evans Street, Old Tower Road, Fire Tower Road, Portertown Road, we started to talk about Allen Road. I remember they came and gave us the schematic design of this is what Allen Road's going to look like. Well, it's a decade, and it still hasn't been done, you know? And I think by the time you start to let the project and it be completed, it'll probably be two decades before that's done. And I understand North Carolina is blessed to be one of the fastest-growing states in the country, but I think that our elected officials at the state level have to do a better job with coming up with solutions. I mean, I think that everybody understands that, you know, if the migration is to turn people to electric vehicles, there's got to be another funding source, right? Because people are going to be stopped buying gas at the pump, where the income's coming from, there's got to be another solution for that. And I think the biggest frustration that I have is the fact that there's been no solution for that. You know, there's a lot of talking and bickering, going back and forth, and blaming and pointing fingers, but at the end of the day, you got to come up with a solution because these communities are going to continue to suffer, and it's going to exacerbate the problem statewide. It's not just a citywide thing, it's a statewide problem, you know? Like I said, North Carolina's a great, a great state, people continue to want to come here. I understand that they've got a lot of congestion in Raleigh, but so does Greenville, so does New Bern, so does Warhead City, so does Wilmington, Leland, all those areas along there, probably Fayetteville, everything in the eastern part of the state's having problems too. So, you know, I, I do want to emphasize that too, I think that you guys get a lot of, of the blame for it, but it's out of your hands. And I would hope that some of our state elected officials would do a better job with coming up with a solution instead of pointing fingers.
Mayor, I'd like to echo that as well. I think that if you look at this objectively, and the city is positioned to continue to grow both from a quality of life and a population perspective, I'd say one of the greatest challenges that impacts that is our system of infrastructure and transportation, and not just from a local perspective, but also the fact that the majority of these large thoroughfares are NC DOT projects. And then you've seen the challenges from Mr. Stroud, and I thank Mr. Stroud and Ms. Alco for being here and to taking the time to look at the challenges that we do have, knowing that a lot of this is outside of their hands from the standpoint of you've got, you've got a funding formula that generates a certain amount of revenue, where you have an environment where costs continue to increase and the population continues to increase, and they're not jiving. So it's going to continue to push those projects out and out as we continue to grow. And there's got to be a solution. And I think that, you know, as a council and as a leadership, we need to recognize that is probably moving forward over the next decade is the greatest challenge that we have from a state perspective, and gathering support at, through our delegation at the state level to be able to fully fund what those needs are, because that funding formula, all things held constant, not going to change. The dollar's going to be allocated to our region and our division, not necessarily going to change based off of that formula. We do have the ability to kind of maneuver projects around and try to fill the gaps where we know we can get a project funded, but that's not meeting the more comprehensive approach. So it is, it's a partnership. We thank NC DOT for their willingness to come and share this information, even though it's not be the best, but I think it's an eye-opener to all of us, these are the challenges that we deal with. And, you know, we just, we guys got to move forward, we got to deal with it, we got to start lobbying for not only more funding, but also for our area and to stand up for the projects that we feel important to the livelihood of our citizens, make sure that our delegation and our state representatives and those at the DOT understand that. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jeremy.
All right, Mayor, item number two is an overview of disparity study for evaluation of city contracting. This is an item that several months ago during the budget process, council asked for more information about disparity study, the length of time that it's been since we've had disparity study, process that we would need to move forward with the disparity study, what that timeframe would look like. We have gathered that information, we're coming back to you with the information that you requested, so I would call forward our business development manager, Tish Williams, for the presentation.
Good afternoon. I'll be presenting an overview of the disparity study for the evaluation of the city's contracting. So, what is a disparity study? The study will evaluate the availability and the utilization of minority and women-owned firms in the city's contracting opportunities over a specified period. It will also identify inequities that might exist in the city's contracting that will negatively impact MWBE firms. The study will include data collection, policy review, findings, and of course, recommendations. And the last bullet is the average cost of a disparity study. Why is it important? A disparity study will create a legally defensible race or gender-based program such as our MWBE program. It also presents an opportunity to promote equity and develop new policies if need be. Typically, a study is done every five years. The city's last study was done in 1991. On this slide, we thought it was important to point out the increase of the numbers from 91 till today. We've got the tax base, the budget, property tax, sales tax, and then when we look at the population, how we've increased just under 90,000. And then on this next slide is a comparison of the demographics within the city of Greenville from, per the Census Bureau, excuse me, reports released for 1990 and 20, the year 2020.
So, Tish, can you, and you've described it, it's kind of mixed up together, is that like the orange, is that the white and the green would be the black populations, 28,000 as compared to 40, and 15,000 as compared to 36? Am I right in saying that?
Yes, the orange, the orange is the white population, is that what you said?
Yes.
I'm sorry, yes, that's correct.
And then the green would be the black?
That's correct.
So going from 28 to 40, basically 41 on the white side, and then the 15, 3, to 36, 2 on blacks. And you can see corresponding numbers. Hispanic is probably the blue and Asian underneath.
On this slide here, wanted to point out that the current, the plan we had in place was adopted in December '89. Underneath the current plan, the contract goals are encouraged, however, the contract may still be awarded if the minority and women participation goals are not met for city contract. And I also wanted to point out that only businesses that are certified, hub certified, which stands for historically underutilized businesses, count towards the contract goals. On this slide here, wanted to show the, our current participation goals, which is broken down per contract type. We've got the construction, professional, and personal services, and then goods at the bottom.
But again, these are standards that are based off of a 1991 study.
That's correct.
So that is the purpose of an updated studies, to see how this would impact our overall goals, and make sure that we have policies and procedures centered around our MWBE program to help us try to achieve those goals.
Thank you. Okay, so on this slide here is pointing out the data collection that would take place during the study. On the left-hand column, the left column, that would be the quantitative data. Want to point out that the payment data that would be collected is pulled from our financial system called MUNIS, and that would include pulling purchase orders, invoices, contracts over a specified period. That could be a five-year period or more, depending on the consultant, what their recommendation is. It would also include looking at the types of contractors that were used, subcontractors as well, who were utilized for the city's past contracts. On the right-hand side, it's going to be the qualitative data collected, which is going to include surveys, interviewing business owners, and identifying any barriers to bidding for MWBEs. Challenges and opportunities, we did look at the, one of the challenges may be with pooling some of the data from the MUNIS system. It will involve this whole process, all city departments, and the quantitative data is required before the next steps within the study could be completed. As far as opportunities, though, this would be an opportunity, as was stated earlier, for us to evaluate and enhance our current MWBE policy. This slide here is just showing a timeline, so the next steps would be publishing a request for proposal, for proposals, excuse me, next month, and then doing an evaluation and interviews with consultants in November and December, and then kicking off the project at the beginning of next year.
So where will the advertisements be in reference for the proposals?
Anytime we do, excuse me, we, anytime we have another city department that handles the requests for proposals, that's posted on our web, city website, it's also posted on the state hub website as well.
Thank you.
Yes.
So at the beginning, when you said that it should be done every five years, where do you get that from? Is that just like a suggestion, industry suggestion, or are other peer cities doing that?
It's an industry suggestion.
Yeah, they had the state WMBE program had their meeting here a couple of months ago, and literally everyone in the room had updated one of us.
Is it seriously 1991 was the last time it was done?
That's correct.
We had to dig to find it.
The thing, anything changes in 91?
We only have a paper copy. We don't even have, we don't even have a digital copy.
No, sure not.
What time do you think the study look at?
That would be, we would probably lean towards a consultant's recommendation, it might be a five-year period, could be slightly more than that. But not it.
I would certainly hope that we could keep it to about a five to seven-year period because at that point in time, we'd cross over the ERP system that we have as a city, which make it, might make it more complicated to be able to compare the data. Right now, we have about five to seven years' worth of data collected within the MUNIS system. Even then, it might be kind of hard to pull, but still, it might be a good basis to be able to look at, based off of all the demographics, based off, you know, of the, of the community, as well as the utilization of women and minority-owned businesses that we've utilized, to be able to help us set those baselines to see where we are in the market, and if we're achieving what our goal, what our goal should be, and give us a basis for being able to do it.
So, the 300 to 50,000 to 400,000, where did that number come from?
So, have we reached out to some other municipalities to gather that information?
And I will say that, we're starting with city council, we have, we have a joint program between the city and GUC for our MWBE program. As soon as we have this conversation here and discuss with you the next step, my, my goal was to have conversations with Mr. Cannon to discuss on not only cost sharing, but asking for the GUC to be included in the process.
So is it $350,000 every time you do the study? How do you sustain that every five years? That's, as I was going to say, that's extremely expensive. Is there a way, is there a, is there a cost-saving way to do it?
And that's, that's why the cost savings would come in if we partnered with another, like a GUC. And I will say that when it comes to like an MWBE programs like, like we have, it is the larger municipalities, it is the Charlottes, the Ashfields, the Wilmingtons, the Greensburles, Mississauga's, Rowleys, Wilmingtons that go through this process, because that's where the, that's where the magnitude of the contracts are held in the larger urban areas, and we clearly have identified ourselves as one of the top cities in the state of North Carolina. I mean, a Williamson, for example, probably is not going through this on a very regular basis.
See for Williamson.
You know, he's from there. He's from there.
Bare grass. Born and raised.
What do we do to get this on the agenda?
On the dirt streets, it's for most of the state.
At this point, staff would move forward, first of all, with conversations with GUC, and then we would start the process of bidding it out to see what the actual would be, and then bring it back to council for consideration of, of.
So after the bid?
Oh, yeah, that's right, yeah, you got to know what the, yeah, you got to know what the bid is.
We got my thumbs up.
How long does the, the process usually take for a disparity study?
I would, yeah, I would say definitely more than a year. I mean, I hope a year and a half, two years.
The minimum would be a year, but it'd probably take about 18 months, so a year and a half.
And I'm thinking, you know, it might be a question for the consultant that you get to do it, what, what is the most expensive part of the study that drives that cost so much higher than any other study that we do?
So it's only two points.
The, the data piece, where you're having to pull that manual data and running the actual disparity analysis. Other place is going to be the community outreach and engagement that comes along with obtaining anecdotal data from the community.
The analytics is a major part of this.
What is our goal?
I don't know what, I don't, I don't know, we got to.
Danae, what's our goal?
You mean by conducting the study?
But in terms of our municipality, what percentage would we like to see awarded to these types of firms?
That is why you go through the process of determining, based off of the market that you operate in, what the, you know, you got the population of minority, minority and women within the community versus the percentage of those businesses that are owned by women and minority businesses, then as compared to the full population. Only until you drill down to that and the, the effort that you're making with, with doing business with MWBE businesses, only until you gather that information and start doing those comparisons, will you be able to establish what those percentages are.
I assume the state and federal government have probably done studies like this, and they've probably got percentages.
they've probably got percentages for North Carolina they recommend.
Yeah, I would, that, that would, that for the state in general.
Right, I understand.
I'm sure that we, can we get some of that data from our peer cities, I guess, once they complete their disparity studies as well, so we can kind of compare it?
Well, we could, uh, have comparative analysis of that.
Yeah.
You don't want to compare ninety-one to their updated ones.
I'm, I'm sure ninety-one's probably right in line right now.
I do have a question. Uh, when you spoke about being hub certified, uh, do we have a pathway for businesses to be hub certified currently?
We, we offer a monthly hub certification workshop, and if we're contacted by a business owner that's interested in being hub certified, we bring them in for a one-on-one and just start the process.
And then, uh, Michael, when you mentioned speaking with GUC about sharing the cost of, um, of this study, are we talking fifty-fifty or?
Uh, I do not know yet. I mean, comparatively speaking, I'd have to compare the level of contracts to their level of contracts and the bidding processes to kind of get them determined if it is about fifty-fifty ratio, if it's sixty-forty, I, I don't know.
I would imagine not, because they probably do a lot of their own contracting in half.
I know that, I know right now, we split, we split the cost of the program fifty-fifty right now. That would be, I'm not gonna, yeah, I'll just say, I have to identify. Yeah, all right, so, we will, uh, continue to move forward with the process, and we'll be bringing back when we have more information.
Thank you.
I like that.
I like that answer.
All right, so, the last item on the agenda is the review of the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four.
I think we ran out of time.
No.
I'm just kidding, Holly, we've got all the time in the world for you.
The First Friday Art Walk, which is an outstanding collaboration between the city, the CBB, and the Arts Council at Emerge, and we wanted to tell you about the success we saw last year, the success we've had with the utilization of the, um, of the trolley, as well as the fact that that has, uh, it has met the end of its useful life. We are in the process of looking for alternatives to move forward with that replacement, and a little bit of work that some of our partners have to go out and do some outreach to maybe fill the gap to, to be able to make that replacement. So I will turn it over to Holly.
I'm sure she's gonna paint us a pretty picture.
Oh, I'm gonna talk to good news.
Hey, before you start, I think the last time that you came up here, I'd asked you about, you know, our, the inlay art, that, are, is that the intersection of Reed and it's, well, it's two intersections of Reed or whatever, but the one at Evans, I noticed that there, it looked like it was either damaged or whatever, and you had said something like, well, you know, it should clean itself, or, it looked way better, like, uh, within a week, within a week afterwards, I was like, it made me feel so much better, so.
I'm glad, I, I watched too.
Hey, hey, uh.
It's self-cleaning.
Don't take credit for that. That was Holly.
You didn't see me out there scrubbing, really, or my staff, probably. Um, well, no, I, we, we really thank you for letting us come and tell you some really great news. Uh, I think this is a truly a success story, and, um, we want it to continue and grow. Um, uh, I don't, I know many of you have come on the Art Walk, I've seen you out there, participated on the Art Walk. Um, and, uh, so just a little background about what is the First Friday Art Walk. Um, this actually started in the year two thousand and one with only the Greenville Museum of Art, Emerge Gallery, and, uh, the Gray Gallery, which is on ECU's campus. And the goal was, um, uh, really about connecting the university community to our downtown community and, um, getting people out for a cultural experience. Uh, fast forward twenty-three years, and we've gone from, uh, three stops to nearly twenty-five stops. Um, and it's pretty remarkable, and the participation as well. It's a self-guided tour, you can start anywhere, stop anywhere, um, walk from stop to stop, get in your car, um, or we'll talk about the, the extra special feature in just a little bit. Um, so, we've had the Art Walk since two thousand and one. The Emerald Loop project started really in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, when we became a smart city, and also, um, uh, were awarded the Our Town Grant through the National Endowment for the Arts, and that is where the trolley idea came into play. The city of Greenville had been, uh, gifted, uh, three trolleys from the city of Charlotte, and it was actually a discussion in the city manager's office about, um, being able to combine, um, the use of the trolleys with the Emerald Loop. And the Emerald Loop is a project that utilizes the arts to transform the center city, um, of, uh, and really create vibrancy, economic development, and, uh, quality of life for our community. And you can see, this concept here is from our artist design team, Hadad and Druigan, about what the trolley could look like, completely blinged out with undercarriage lighting and LED, and making it something truly unique to the city of Greenville. No other city would have a trolley that would look like this. Um, and so, this is our Emerald Express, the, our trolley, um, and a little bit of history about that. Um, toward the end of the pandemic, uh, tail end of the pandemic, um, the city launched a pilot program to see how successful the trolley program could be. Um, it was several evenings a night per week, uh, and, uh, it did, the numbers were not great. I mean, it was, again, during the end of the pandemic, I don't know about you, I didn't necessarily wanted, want to take public transportation, and this really isn't about getting to work, uh, or point A to point B, it's truly about connecting our business district. And, um, so the pilot was suspended, however, before it, um, Sierra Jones with the CBB and myself, we did, um, a public art tour, had a record number of people on for that day. The driver was like, I've never seen this many people on the trolley for the, pretty much entirety of the, uh, uh, pilot, or a good portion of it, and so we knew it would work. We knew that there was a need for this. And, um, and so, we took the summer off, and then, uh, we had a conversation with the city manager's office about, um, uh, the Commission and Visitors Bureau and the Arts Council renting, uh, renting the trolley, uh, for specifically First Friday Art Walk nights. And I think that's when our partners for the Art Walk really, um, grew, shifted, um, came together. Uh, historically, in two thousand and one, the Art Walk was a partnership between Uptown Greenville and Emerge. Um, and then Uptown Greenville really took the lead. Um, they had, uh, funding, they had staffing that really took it to another level. Um, and, uh, at that time, it was a very vibrant Art Walk for, for many, many years. However, with the pandemic, a little before that, um, the Art Walk did not get as much support from Uptown Greenville, and, um, and at, during the pandemic, the Commission and Visitors Bureau and the Arts Council stepped up because we really saw this as a program that connected our businesses, helped reinforce our businesses, helped reinforce a district, um, and to bring people and promote, uh, the, um, promote activity and quality of life for our community. And so, all of last year, this was not in our scope of services, but, um, uh, we really felt like this was a need for the city, for us to step up and volunteer to give our time to enhance the Art Walk. Um, since that time, our organization and, um, the city have really come, come together. Um, I want to really, um, brag about Sierra Jones, um, and I will, she has ridden the trolley almost every single First Friday, has just made it pretty, really incredible. Um, and so, Andrew and Sierra from the CBB, Sierra Luger, our marketing director, and myself, um, from Emerge and the Arts Council, and now Ashley Gaskins with the city manager's office are all on the Art Walk Steering Committee. And I think it shows you how, what a partnership, um, it, it really takes to make this happen, and we're all dedicated to make this a success. Um, and so, we came together last year and said, we need to do this, and we relaunched, um, the Art Walk with the Emerald Express, and, um, it has just been, um, success, I mean, a really successful season, and a lot of, um, excitement from our community and our businesses. I think, um, especially with our downtown businesses coming out of the pandemic and the construction, we have to focus on how can we help our businesses? And the First Friday Art Walk is, um, it's low-hanging fruit with, with, um, the impact as far as, um, everybody helps with it, in other words. I mean, twenty-four businesses and art organizations all putting advertising into it, it's just exponentially, um, uh, successful. Um, and so, I think the other successful part, if you have ridden the Emerald Express on a First Friday Art Walk, it is truly incredible, like, the diversity of our community that you see on this trolley. I mean, it's too, it's, I mean, Sierra and I, we just sit there and look and go, oh my gosh, I mean, there, um, there was a freshman class from ECU riding it on Friday night, we have retirees, all different races from different parts of the community, tourists, community members. It is just a beautiful, uh, cross-section of truly what Greenville is. And, um, and when Hadad and Druigan came up with the concept of the trolley, it was all about connecting and using public transportation as a connector. And I think this is where you see that, um, all walks of life are on the, um, on the trolley. Um, so I'm gonna turn it over to Andrew now to talk about the economic development, but a little tidbit, um, about that, um, or actually to talk about the, the ridership, um, and economic development, um, and, or I guess I'm gonna do this.
You're gonna do that one.
Yeah, I'm gonna do this one, because it's so fun. Um, so, and Kevin, I don't know with the pilot, do you remember the average ridership for?
Lemonade.
Yeah, I mean, two people, two people maybe, some days. Um, so we launched this.
One of them was a girl.
I think it was, I think it was. Um, so we started with the September Art Walk last year with seventy-four. Now, these, these, in the, um, November, December, we really shouldn't have even listed those. November, the trolley broke down, um, we had a, other misfortunes. Um, in December, we didn't even know it was running, and, um, we had Greenville Gives and that trolley going. So you take those out, um, and some bad weather dates, um, but you see, I mean, the total, six hundred and eighty, um, this is less than three hours. I mean, really, most people get started about five-thirty, and it ends at eight. Um, uh, so we ended June with a hundred and forty-one people in that three hours span of time, and on Friday, Sierra, how many people did we have?
Hundred and thirty-two.
Hundred and thirty-two. So, um, this is just, it's gonna grow, it's gonna continue to grow, and it really shows that there is a need for it. Um, and now, with our three partners coming together with promotion, it's, I'm really excited to see how that's gonna grow. And now I'm gonna turn it over to Andrew, um, for the economic impact, and just a small note, I brought my kids out to the Art Walk on, uh, Friday, and, um, I probably spent a hundred and twenty-five dollars on food and ice cream at the scullery, we did some karaoke, um, and so, it shows, people are gonna spend money when they come downtown.
Thanks, Holly. I guess, I just wanted, I get two slides, by the way, so, um, I wanted to just talk a little bit about what we see from a tourism perspective, what the Art Walk is. Um, so it's a lot of different things for us. So I was talking to Sierra right before we got here, and one of the things she told me is that there was some people on the trolley, uh, on Friday night that just moved here, right? So it's an exposure tool, you know, we're teaching people, our residents, about the downtown and the type of businesses we have. We know that it's a visitor tool as well, and we're getting ready to have a lot of visitors right across the street here when the Hilton Garden Inn opens. And so we think this will be a great tool, and even maybe putting a stop at the Hilton Garden Inn to have these visitors come in to learn about our downtown, and to refuel their thought process about, you know what, I'm gonna come back here in January or February and visit this business or that business. So it's about trying to get return visits as well, right? Um, looking at, really, you, you can see that there's a great economic impact of the arts, and really, there's a lot of data there, but the one I want you to pay attention to is that one on the bottom right, thirty-three dollars and thirty-nine cents per person. Obviously, it didn't poll you, because you're at the hundred and twenty-five mark. But out of all the markets we deal with, that's the highest per-person expenditure.
You kind of divide it out, right?
All kids.
You need to make the kids pay for themselves.
It's about, you know, it's a person.
So that's a lot of money per person. So, you know, we're talking about having Sierra on the trolley and other people on the trolley, and they're educating the whole time that we're riding. We have a P.A. system, they're talking, and they're saying, hey, you know what, next Friday, we've got the African-American Jazz Series, you gotta come back for that. Our next two weeks from now, we've got this event happening, or that event happening. So we're constantly educating, so it's an education tool, but to us at the tourism office, it's an economic development tool, as well as a way to expose people to, to Greenville and Pitt County and our downtown. So we're really excited, and that's why we were so eager to partner with the city and with Holly, because it's a great opportunity to showcase our destination. Um, I know Kevin here in just a minute is gonna talk a little bit about, we're probably at the useful end of the trolley's life, um, but we see a new trolley or the trolley that we have as a tool to use more than just the Art Walk. The Art Walk's a great opportunity to use the trolley, and it's obviously working with the ridership that we've seen, but our office gets calls, okay? We get calls from family reunions, from others. Uh, during Juneteenth, we did four tours on the trolley of our African-American Cultural Trail, and it was very, very well-received, and so we've got people asking, maybe you guys could do that once every Saturday, you know, have an astounding event, um, to do that trail tour. Uh, we have family reunions that are asking for transportation to do the Cultural Trail Tour, but also other cultural tours, we can use that trolley as well. Public art tours, Holly talked a little bit about that, and, and Sierra, they did that. Downtown tours, we could use the trolley to help us at the CBB showcase what we have to our potential meeting planners, our potential family reunion planners, and our potential sports tournament planners. Right now, we're borrowing the, the city wreck and park vans when we can, when they're available, to do those tours, um, but you have to think of it from our point of view, we use different types of tools to market Greenville and Pitt County, whether it's convention center, or sports tourism, uh, facilities, art, uh, and the downtown is one of those tools. So we've got to get people interested in our downtown, because when they come, they want to know what they can do. Holiday tours, we know that we do a tour during Greenville Gives, um, there's probably some other opportunities that we can use a, a trolley for as well, economic development tours, and other events that come up throughout the, the year. Um, so, the trolley's a great tool because you've got an audience that cannot get out. They can't get out unless they're gonna take their lives in their own hands, um, and so we call that a captured audience in our business, and it's an opportunity for us to educate and continually let people know what we have going on in Greenville and Pitt County. So, we're excited to partner with Holly and the city, and, uh, again, thank you, Sierra, for your, you've been the heart and soul of this, and I'm gonna turn it over to Kevin.
Thank you. All right, yeah, Holly mentioned that we did get, uh, did receive this gift of the, um, nearly two trolleys in operation, we did get three trolleys. Um, the trolleys from Charlotte are two thousand and five vintage, and I think Andrew said they're nearing the end of their useful life, they're well beyond their useful life. Um, so we talked about the future capital expenditures or future capital needs of, of all of these, um, additional trolley uses, and the current trolleys. In fiscal year twenty-four, our maintenance expenses were about forty-three thousand dollars. Our revenue was about, it was, it says eight here is closer to nine thousand dollars. From a return on investment, that's not the best business model you would, you wouldn't want out there, so, um, but part of that, a lot of that is the age of the trolleys, all right? So, uh, we're looking at a replacement trolley, and it would be something that looks like this, looks very much like our existing trolley, right? We, we'd get this in green, but the picture of the brochure is in red. So, um, so estimated cost for that. So estimated cost of a new trolley is about two hundred and twenty thousand, uh, we would look to have an outfit there, probably have forty to fifty thousand, so our estimate is two hundred and seventy thousand for the purchase and outfit, um, and the breakdown of funds for that, eighty thousand coming from the city, eighty thousand coming from travel and tourism, and the remainder coming from the Pitt County, um, Arts Council, Arts Council, as well as some grants and donations that, uh, that Arts Council and CBB would be tasked with raising. So, uh, that's what we're looking at, um, the. The replacement trolley, you're probably about four or five months out. If you ordered it today, four months from now, we'd have a new trolley. Again, I would expect that the fiscal year '24 maintenance would be the fiscal year '25 maintenance. We would be looking at, on the order of $40,000 a year, to maintain these trolleys. In fact, one trolley's operational right now. The second one, they have not authorized the improvements, because it's a new turbo system, and $10,000 to $15,000 for that. So, this is where we are with the future capital needs. All right, I think.
So, it's unfunded at this moment in time. What staff would do is continue to work with the CBB and Arts Council in Emerge to see if we could go out and seek any, either private donations or specifically grants, to be able to make up that delta of the $80,000. But that would be something that I would think that we would, as a partnership, try to work towards in order to fill that gap. So, we would have the funding available before we would ever discuss placing in the work.
On average, how many people are riding the trolley at any given time?
You mean, how many seats are on it?
Well, I mean, like, how many people are actually riding it, like?
That's what the numbers we saw.
Yeah, I know, I know. But like, at any given time.
Yeah. So, at some, I know, like, Portia, when you were on there, it was packed, you know? So, 20, what was it?
It was 22.
22. And then, some people get on and off, and each stops, so it probably would range, well, Sierra.
I mean, it's standing room only for about 20 to 25 minutes on Friday night. It really just depends on the flow of traffic. It really picks up about 5:30, 5:25, and then it stays busy until like 15 minutes stay.
Do you, but is that just, just, I guess, on the art walk?
Yeah, we are only renting it for First Friday Art Walks.
Okay, so that's the only time it's being used at all?
Currently.
It was used for Juneteenth as well.
For American Cultural Trail.
Okay.
Mayor, that cost, that revenue of $9,000, that was 15 events, 15 events. So, it's not running.
I guess my thought is, is trying to maximize the amount of usage that you can have, like, by lowering the cost.
Well, first place, the reason it's not used more right now is because.
The only thing that'll work half the time.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so like, you know, have we looked into like, like, some type of EV bus or something like that, that can be self-charged at one of our charging stations downtown at the?
Well, this is all about getting a new one, so that's how you solve the problem.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but like, that's a sustainable one. You're spending $40,000 just to maintain it.
Just for next year.
But things can get broke down eventually, and it's going to cost more and more money to maintain it. I'm trying to think about is usage, so you can get more things and expand it.
So, last year, we looked into some EV vehicles, and I consulted a lot with other cities and also the National Endowment for the Arts, because it was sort of like, should we go this golf cart, little, you know, go that direction? And the advice that I kept getting over and over was the attraction of a trolley versus a little golf cart or EV. People don't know it's arrived, they don't know it's used, they don't know what it is. I mean, my kids, they see this trolley go by, and it's like, whatever, we just need to get on it. Seeing these easy-to-use students, you know, retirees, it is truly an attraction.
I got an idea, this came up, a perfect idea. You should purchase three Tesla Cybertrucks, and you can get three different prominent law firms in the area to sponsor them. Everybody would want to get on a Cybertruck, right? I mean, when you look at it, it looks like a robot car.
A couple of questions I have. I know the pilot, I know we were talking about the pilot, was maybe not a big up sell. That was done, that wasn't for all walks, that was just done, it was almost just kind of done as a, as a runner. I think, you know, having it dedicated for art walks is just a tremendous idea. I think this whole, like you said, when you see the trolley, you know what it is. It's something that really distinguishes Greenville. We're going to have more and more people here. It's something that people are going to say, "When I come to Greenville, be sure to do the trolley. Be sure to do the art walk." And just by way of a question, you all clearly have thought about this, but the idea of having a standing tour on Saturdays or Friday afternoons, and then a standing African-American cultural trail tour, you know, whether you alternate that, or whether you do two and one, whatever y'all think best. I think having a standing tour, though, once we get the trolley figured out, would be a great idea.
Yeah, I mean, clearly, the goal would be to, from a travel and tourism perspective, and to make us a destination community, would be to utilize this for all these other types of events where we could create a draw to see how possible.
How about to offset the cost? We partner with the hotel downtown and perhaps the Hilton to shuttle between football games, and then the downtown group on pre-boot Fridays to use this as a means of transportation.
Matter of fact, and like I said, SubDogs at one point, I don't know if there still are, but was contracting a bus to be able to move people from SubDogs down to the football games. So, that's a good example of how it could be used from a contract perspective.
The Hilton and the Downtown Association on pre-boot Fridays.
Unlimited.
Spring football games.
You got it.
Hilton, I mean, that could, some alternative revenues to use as a style of trolley.
That hotel right there would absolutely die to have something like this outside and be able to move people from one location to another. Those are the kind of opportunities that this would bring us that we don't have right now, because darn thing that'll work half the time.
I'm surprised it's gotten this far, because when we first got it, I think they were already kind of working it. Didn't we use the third one to cannibalize for parks and that again?
You should have seen the first year, the softball players were so excited about riding the trolley until they got halfway through, and it broke down on them. They had to go get a cutaway to be able to move them off the trolley, to move them onto the cutaway to get them to the game.
So, my question would be, the $270,000. So, I like the idea, but with 680 people at $270,000, of course, we're saying participation would increase, but that's $400 per person. That's an expensive ride. So, would there be able to, have you considered doing something like a van or a party bus or something, and wrapping it real cute? Would be less expensive than $270,000.
In November, the trolley broke down, and we actually used the cutaway bus, the small passenger bus. And talking about that attraction, nobody got on it.
But I'm not even talking about something like that, because that's not, that's not set up or, you know, ornated or something, you know, sport. Like, you get a party bus, and it's wrapped, and, you know, you can customize those on the inside. That would be.
You talking like a passenger van, or you talking like a minivan?
Not even necessarily a van. I've seen party buses, it's like a vehicle, but it's wrapped, and it's decorative, and the inside is customized, and you could seat just as many people for less than $270,000.
Did you see the one that they did for the Little League softball series?
That's, it's a cutaway.
Yeah. I think that's what you're talking about. That's what I was thinking of, too.
Okay, okay.
Of course, you would seat quite a few people in there.
Why? Because I've seen party buses that seat 20-plus.
Kevin, what'd you guess of what a bus would cost?
One more time?
Just like a, you know, what would you guess?
I don't think it's quite $250, probably $150.
Yeah, I love this, everything about it. Love the art, I love that. I think this is one of the only things that we do downtown that draws people into businesses and connects the area. I think our downtown is one that needs connectivity. We have these sort of separate Dickinson Corridor, we've got Evan Street Corridor. We're soon going to have a beautiful park down by the river, once we get our new bulkhead built. We're hoping to reactivate First Street. More and more, as time goes on, we're going to need something that connects the area and also creates that perception of connectivity, that people see downtown as a cohesive place. And nothing else we do down here gets people into businesses, experiencing businesses, literally takes them from business to business. Sierra gives an educational little snippet about each business as she's pulling up, so that the people in there are getting information about our town, they're getting more excited about what we do. That is huge, and I think the ridership will, of course, increase, but I think that makes the expense just seem more reasonable, when you really start looking at the whole picture.
Yeah, and again, those were 2024, when we first started in 2024. We're very excited to see this fiscal year, hopefully, this number quadrupled.
And also, as more stuff, including the hotel and other exciting things come to the air, we're going to have more people. I think doing another program eventually, where we had a weekend trolley service that was going from the hotel, all the different restaurants down here, I think as we move along in time, that that's going to become a greater need, and would be a really exciting thing for people to participate in moving forward.
It's distinctive, the way a trolley looks, you know, you think about San Francisco.
And if it's that previous slide with that LED light, again, what is going to make it usually to Greenville?
I have a disco ball.
Disco ball, I'm here for that. I'm a bus. I'm here for that.
Hey, what type of fuel does that use, the trolley?
So, the one we're talking about is diesel.
So, it's a diesel fuel?
Yeah.
Is that more expensive?
So, more affordable than an electric vehicle, but if you, if you pay for an electric vehicle, it would have a return on that. It would be a cleaner burning vehicle.
So, an EV trolley would really be super expensive.
EV trolley, typically, they're twice the cost of.
It did, he's developed the downtown area with a bulkhead, and the county's building their stuff across the river, and we started developing that. Then they're going to say, "Oh, parking." If you had a trolley, parking with ECU, they have centralized parking, the trolley takes you back and forth, utilize all your space down on the river for entertainment, restaurants, bars, whatever, breweries, and then have a trolley coming through there to take you back and forth to the parking areas, you don't have to worry about parking.
It does create character for the downtown area.
Absolutely.
I mean, just like we all do. But nonetheless, Mayor, I would remind that this is, if you saw those numbers, we're not there yet. Additional grants and have raised money to see if it could bridge the gap.
Yeah. So, I see which.
I think, I think everybody's in favor of it. I think we're all just looking at just different ideas of what we can do to make it, I guess. Because my whole thought process is, when we spend large amounts of money, it takes away, right? And if there's more money that can be given to Emerge, you know, to enhance your programs, that's a good thing, if there's a way that we could save money. I think that's always something I think we, as a council, have to make sure that we're looking into. And so, I think it's just more or less coming up with a solution that fits and, you know, doesn't take away from what you're trying to accomplish, yet also could potentially be a cost savings for us, too. Because, I mean, we've been talking about money all day today. Everything's expensive, including our roads.
I think the return on investment is truly going to come to the success of all our businesses downtown. And I think that's where, you know, we're going to see it, as we talked about, this is the one program that I think district-wide helps our businesses succeed.
I would agree with you on that. I would agree that that's probably the best help of everything that's taking place downtown right now.
And one quick thing, too, we look at it also as a resident amenity, and if we can make it more attractive, attractive to live here, then that's also an economic development project.
Have we engaged the Greenville Downtown Partnership?
That's a net. They haven't been sent agenda tonight. I'm just saying, I mean, I would think it.
I think we should.
Because they're will.
I think we should. I can have Seb take a look.
I'm just thinking, it may change some of these numbers.
Right, yes, just a moment.
Hey, I think you're right. I think you're right.
Matt can get on that.
Matt will be on it.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Willis, second by Councilman Foreman. All those in favor, say aye. Anybody say nay? She got the finger.